You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Good evening. A special meeting of the Branford RTM is called to order at 7:01 PM. We will rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This program was brought to you...
Good evening. The agenda for tonight's meeting includes one item, and it is the following proposed resolution which I will read. Resolved that the resolution...oh, call to order, sorry. Roll call.
Representative Adams.
Present.
Representative Edelman.
Present.
Representative Alphon.
Here.
Representative Amori.
Here.
Representative Anderson.
Here.
Representative Black.
Here.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Here.
Representative Brooks.
Yes.
Representative Dayhill.
Here.
Representative Everson.
Here.
Representative Greenberg.
Here.
Representative Hartwell.
Here.
Representative Henshaw.
Here.
Representative Hines.
Here.
Representative Ingraham.
Here.
Representative Keith.
Aye.
Representative Leach. Absent. Representative Larson. Representative LaFredo.
Here.
Representative Mareska.
Here.
Representative McCall.
Present.
Representative McCormick.
Present.
Representative Newpain.
Here.
Representative Papalizio.
Here.
Representative Sharkey.
Here.
Representative Schrestha.
Here.
Representative Sumro.
Here.
Representative Toohill.
Here.
Representative Verderam.
Here.
Representative Waterman.
Here.
And ex officios, I see...
Town Clerk Arpin.
Town Clerk Arpin.
Selectman Higgins.
I don't see him.
Selectman Higgins.
Jamie.
Okay. There's a quorum.
We have a quorum, okay. The agenda for tonight's meeting contains one item, and it is a proposed resolution which I will read. That a resolution authorizing an appropriation of $7,650,000 for the Walsh Intermediate School Field Improvement Project and the financing of said appropriation by the assistance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $7,650,000. Therefore, be adopted and recommended for adoption by the representative town meeting. Is there a motion to waive the reading of the full resolution and have it incorporated into the minutes of this meeting? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have two...oh, that's right. We need a vote for this resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have two committee reports, two committees jointly heard this last...this week. So who will begin? Admin Services?
Sure. Hello? Thank you, Madam Moderator. I am pleased to announce that after the presentation and discussion with First Selectman Cosgrove and other representatives involved in the planning of this project, this past Tuesday, February 27th, at the Joint Committee between Admin Services and Ways and Means, Admin Services unanimously voted in favor of the resolution by a vote of six to nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Hartwell.
At the Tuesday meeting, the Ways and Means Committee also voted unanimously in favor of the proposal.
Motion.
So I'd like to move the motion to be approved.
I'll second.
Madam Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Black.
Just a point of information. On the agenda, it should read, is hereby adopted and approved. This is just a cut and paste from the Board of Finance, so we're not recommending it for approval by us, but we are approving it.
Okay.
So everyone should be aware of that in the minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have a vote on this? We have an open discussion. I'd like to hear from members of the representative town meeting on these motions.
Madam Moderator?
Yes. Representative Dayhill.
My name is Susan Dayhill. I represent the 7th District. I read the proposal on the Walsh Intermediate School Fields with great interest. When we raised our two children, both girls played field sports from elementary through high school, and I volunteered as a team mom. That largely involved snacks. I later graduated to team manager. That largely involved transportation issues. I spent a lot of time on the sidelines cheering and refilling water bottles, so I was happy to see that repairs to playing fields were in the works at the middle school. When I read the proposal, I was surprised to see that two artificial turf fields were included. I thought that municipalities, coaches, and parents were concerned about the health risk of synthetic turf. So I Googled synthetic turf. There were many articles about injuries and potential health risks. My next step was to consult with neighbors and friends who know more than I do about this issue. One, a recently retired and highly respected Branford pediatrician. Another, a scientist at Yale who conducted research on injury and infection using crumb rubber fill and turf. And a third, a parent of two young children and an experienced contractor who has worked with these materials. All three expressed surprise that Branford was considering installing artificial turf fields. The scientist recommended that I educate myself on this issue by reading a report that she emailed to me. The report was issued by EHHI, Environmental and Human Health, Inc. This is a journal article concerning the chemical analysis of the crumb rubber found in synthetic fields. The article was authored by Gabori Benoit, Ph.D., Professor of Chemistry at Yale School of the Environment. These are some of the professor's conclusions. Natural grass fields get a few degrees hotter than the outside air, but synthetic fields get 60 to 70 degrees hotter than outside air. This makes the fields potentially dangerous. The players can get dehydrated and even experience heat stroke. Small children are at even higher risk. Chemical analysis conducted at Yale found 12 carcinogens in the synthetic turf tested. High temperatures cause crumb rubber infill to outgas at a higher rate, which poses an additional health risk for those who play on them in the summer. In its conclusion, the report states that people are beginning to understand the dangers of synthetic turf fields, but it also shows that our job is not finished yet. There is no safer surface for students and athletes to play on than regular grass fields. That last statement is so important that I'm going to repeat it. There is no safer surface for students and athletes to play on than regular grass fields. At both ends of my street, there are grass recreational fields that are regularly maintained by our town crews. They do a great job. I am sure that they would do an equally good job of maintaining renovated grass fields at Walsh. I hope you will consider this data and agree with the researchers that there is no safer surface for students and athletes to play on than regular grass fields and reconsider this portion of the plan at the intermediate school. One of the other issues that was discussed that I will just do very briefly is soccer players, specifically goalkeepers. The research has shown that soccer goalkeeper's relationship with crumb rubber that is on the field is much deeper than the relationship with the average player. Amy Griffin, the goalkeeper coach at the University of Washington, one of the top goalkeeper coaches in the entire nation, worked with goalkeepers for 24 years at the university. While the rest of the team is running, passing, and kicking, goalies are repeatedly diving for balls, making saves, hitting the turf, and getting back up. That leads to a lot of contact with the rubber. Goalies get crumb rubber in their eyes and mouths. They get them in abrasions and probably get them through their pores on a hot day. This is, again, according to that coach. So what I would like to say in conclusion is that if the synthetic fields remain in the plan, I regrettably will not be able to vote to approve it. I do believe in the importance of fixing the field, maintaining the field, and making and having our field safe for our students, and so I would vote to abstain. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you, Representative Dayhill. Other comments by members of the RTM? Representative Sumro. Oh, well...
Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Speak up.
Sumro, Representative Sumro from District 4. I rise here to support the new turf, and I'm very excited that we are working on such a vital project. I know firsthand about the importance of the project because I have a high school sportsman in my home. We have only one turf in our town, and I become a...and it becomes a bottleneck in the summer when boys and girls teams of different sports need it. This vital investment is our...is for our future generation and helps promote more sports for town students and athletes. I urge all my colleagues to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Sumro. Representative Henshaw.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will be voting for this project. I think it's a great project for the town and much needed, and I respect all of the input that the public has given it over the years in pushing it forward. In committee, there were a lot of questions asked with the intent of assuring that this will be a successful project for Branford and for our children. And I think one of the key questions I asked Dominic Seltreuda, the BL Company's project manager, was regarding the safety of the materials to be used in the artificial turf. And again, thanks to the concerns of Representative Dayhill, this issue had been brought to our attention with a concern for the health and safety of our children. I will insert here that I did have a long conversation with the building committee manager for the Guilford High School project, who happens to be my son-in-law. And he mentioned that they, in reviewing the possible use of artificial turf, they spent a lot of time deliberating on whether or not they should use artificial turf or not use it. And I think the conclusion that they came to was that it was virtually impossible to maintain grass fields when they're being used every day in athletic facilities and events. So they came to the conclusion with some degree of hesitation to go with artificial turf, and I can understand that conclusion. I will note that artificial turf has undergone a lot of development in the past decade, so not all products are of the same concern, but some are. I had asked BL in committee if the turf specification excluded use of any hazardous materials and required testing for the same. The answer, the response, was yes. The specifications do exclude the use of any hazardous materials in the artificial turf, and they require testing before being brought on site for installation. However, I did get the actual specifications and took a look at those, and although they do exclude materials with PFAS, they do not specifically exclude other toxins. The specifications only require that the hazardous material test be developed for the materials and recorded, but the final acceptance of the products are up to the project managers. So I did a little more research, and I do also know that there are currently, there are several FIFA-approved turf systems which are specifically designed to avoid toxic components. And my hope is that during the bidding of this project, the team will carefully evaluate the manufacturers, the alternative manufacturers, from a health and safety perspective. And again, we want the safest fields for Branford and for this much-needed project. Thank you.
Other comments from members of the RTM? Representative Bonnenberger.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm pretty convinced of the science that artificial turf fields are measurably more dangerous, but not so much so that it's something that would stop one from using them necessarily. My feeling is that so long as the town maintains some grass fields and artificial turf fields, the parents have a choice, that citizens have a choice. If you're really, really upset about this, then you can make sure that your kid doesn't play on the artificial turf field, or you yourself don't, then that is sufficient for me. So I will be voting with the support of this measure. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Representative Bonnenberger. Other comments? Representative Toohill.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's, you know, it's a great plan. It's obviously been very well thought out over the years. I mean, it's got everything there, from the handicapped usage to outdoor restrooms. It's got a nice track. It's got two fields there. I mean, this is the type of quality that, you know, that we should have in Branford, and we're going to have in Branford. So please, everybody vote for it. It's been, you know, a long time coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Toohill. Representative Everson.
Thank you. I will be voting in favor of this. I too have concerns about the science of artificial turf. We were assured during the committee meeting that there's going to be testing, and there have been advances. I think that the field, from what everyone has told us, all of you out in the audience, it will garner more playing time for the kids, and that's the most important part of this whole equation. You know, it's about the kids and the future generations. The kids who will play on this field will probably be paying for it in 20 years, but it's a good investment for our town. And with the upgrades that have been done at the Walsh Intermediate School, I'm hoping that it will attract more families to our town once it's finished, because the Walsh School will be one of the top, probably in this area, with the amenities and also with the building itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I also voted in the committee for this project, and I will do so tonight. But what I want to bring to everyone's attention that in any project like this, there are actually two decisions that have to be made. The first decision is, do you want the project? Is the use of these funds for this particular project more important, more useful, more beneficial than using money somewhere else? And there's always a question that you have to ask and answer, and I think that that has been answered. I think that before, it's been very clear that these fields are needed, that this project is going to provide a lot of support, both for the school and for the town in general. So from the project point of view, that's, I think, a done, a settled question. The second question that always needs to be asked at the same time is how do you pay for it? So there's the project, and there's the financing. And tonight, we're going to approve of a bonding proposal that will allow the town to go out and bond for another $7.65 million, which is not a small amount of money. So we on the RTM, and especially in my committee, Ways and Means, have to be very cognizant of the fact that this is going to be an additional financial burden for the town for 20 years. And so that's, that needs to be taken into account as well. Now, we have heard that it might be possible to bring some funds from the unexpended money that was put into the Walsh Intermediate School to begin with and help offset this project. So I'm hopeful that we will be looking at that. It might also be possible, and I don't know if we have explored it as deeply as we might, to find some money from the state, because there is often the case where you can go to the state and ask for supplemental bonding, and they can give you some money. So I'm hopeful that we will be doing that as well. And that in addition, of course, is to any kind of management of the project where you try to keep the expenses as low as possible while delivering a project that is the one that you're looking for to begin with. So I'm not asking for the project to be short-changed in any way. It's an expensive project. It involves a lot of work. It's going to benefit the town for 20 years. But I am asking in terms of the financing that we be as innovative as we can be to keep those costs contained so that for the next 20 years, we're not paying quite so much. And I'll just finish one thing here. Because this is a long-term project, it is clear that we should be doing bonding, because we want to spread the cost out, not just to the people in the town tonight, the people who are here and the people who aren't here, but we don't want to load all the cost on us tonight, because it's a 20-year project. So one of the things in project finance people always look at is to match the funding to the life of the project, and that's what we do in bonding. So that's why we'll go out for bonding for 20 years, because that's an important thing. Mr. Finch talks about intergenerational equity, and he's absolutely right. The idea is that if people 10 years, 15 years, 20 years from now are going to be enjoying the project, the benefits of the project, they should also participate in paying for it. So that's a very basic concept, and we, one that we should adhere to. So we will bond tonight. We will approve the bonding tonight, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the town is going to be forced to add $7.65 million to the total bonding that we have on our books. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwell. Other comments from the RTM? Hearing none. I'll open it up to comments from the public. There are a lot here. If there are some young people who would like to speak, we'd like them to go first. Can you tell us your name and where you live?
Hi, my name is Kier Morcy. I live in Branford, and I live at 79 year old drive.
Okay.
I'm Alani. I live in Branford.
Okay, very good. Good enough. Okay, who's going to go first?
You can. Okay. We go to Walsh Elementary School, and we think that we should get new fields. We have been playing since we were in, playing lacrosse since we were in 3rd grade, and it's really unsafe to play, because once I was about to score my first goal and I tripped in a hole. Luckily, I didn't get hurt, but that still shouldn't happen.
It is also unfair, because at practice, we always need to watch out for dog poop, and a game should not need to get canceled if it is, if it has rained two days before, just because the fields are soggy, a soggy mess. I don't know if you know this, but we have to play in the parking lot sometimes at recess if, because if it rains, the field's all flooded, so we have to play in the parking lot. It's really annoying. Thank you, and please consider this. Good night.
Lovely lady. Okay, anybody else younger than 10? If you would like to speak, we invite you. Please try to keep your comments as brief as possible. Anybody else from the public want, like to come up and speak? Yes, sir. Come up, please. Good evening.
My name is Raymond Seligson. I'm a just-retired pediatrician. I've been practicing in Branford for almost 30 years, and I know a lot of the people in this room and a lot of the children. I have a strong opinion about, and I have spoken to friends of mine who are pediatricians. I've spoken to other kinds of medical professionals, and I've been involved, obviously, in taking care of children, some of whom unfortunately get injured in playing sports. That's inevitable. Children will get injured playing sports. However, I have seen a pattern, and I have, I know that I've seen the same pattern through my discussions with other pediatricians and other physicians, that there is a definite increase in injuries and problems relating to artificial turf. I'm sure that there are improvements of artificial turf over the last 20 years, but these problems are still existence. The problems physically, I see things like joint injuries, turf toe. I've seen a lot of skin problems of children playing on artificial turf. I've seen ankle injuries. I've seen ACL injuries, and these are, there's no question, the literature and my own personal experience to tell me that this happens more often when artificial turf is being used in soccer, in football, in lacrosse, in all sports that children play. Children are most vulnerable at that age to this kind of injury as a result of this kind of surface. You also have to worry about the toxins, which has been mentioned already. Heat buildup can be a very real problem. And the other problem I think that has to be thought of is the future of what you do when these artificial turf surfaces have to be taken down and recycled. They are not easily recycled, and the outgassing and the other kinds of ecological problems that come about as a result of taking tons of material off of a field that has been now having to be resurfaced, which does not happen if you are intelligently using the right kind of materials in natural grass and using, you know, maintaining it properly without too many toxins. So I really, I really think that, I think the fields are necessary. I'm glad that there's going to be money spent for them, but I do think that we need to consider whether or not artificial turf is the right way to go for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seligson. Other comments before we move to a vote? Yes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sophia, and I'm 13, and I've been playing on the softball field since I was in 6th grade. And I just think it would need, you know, like improvement, and I like agree with putting turf down, because it's the spring, you know? I mean, we don't really get a lot of heat waves. We mostly get rain a lot, and, and I'm a pitcher, and sometimes there would be practice or games, and I would be pitching in like mud, and it would just drag, so much dragging would make like holes and stuff, and it would just knock me down, and especially in the outfield, like when there's, there's a bunch of bugs, mosquitoes. I would come home with welts on, like my arms, my legs, and it wouldn't be really good, and my, you know, my parents would have to take care of me. And I just feel like, you know, like in the field, just in general, there's just a bunch of holes, and like in the ground, it's not smooth. So that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
He was first, and then you, then you're next. There was somebody before you who had to stand up. Go ahead and stand up.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator, for the time tonight. My name's Chris Sullivan. I live at 18 Pine Hollow Road. I'm here tonight to support the funding for upgrading and enhancing the athletic fields at Walsh. I believe we need more field resources for athletic teams in our town, and this project will move us in a good direction. I do wish that the project was focusing on natural grass fields and were selected for the project. There is opposition to artificial turf fields in some of the highest levels of sports. The NFL Players Association is opposed to turf fields, and FIFA, who oversees the World Cup, is forcing U.S. stadiums with turf to install grass for the upcoming games in the United States. And I know that my feet feel a lot worse after playing soccer on turf than when I play on grass. But I also know that this project is moving forward with a turf option selected, and that's based on estimated hours of use. I take the high hours as a symptom that we need to continue investing in facilities in Branford. I know that the teams, both school and club programs, need more fields for practices and games, and many programs must currently share fields or use spaces that don't quite meet their needs, so I'm in support of the funding for this project. I also know there was concern about delaying the vote on this project. I know that there are many new members on this body, and I believe it is okay for decision-makers to be sure they understand the ins and outs of a project and financial ramifications of adding almost $8 million of debt for the project and an additional $20 million for another project that is under consideration. I want the people that are voting on incurring debt to be informed when they vote for the project, and I believe most, if not all, voting tonight will be in favor of the fields project. After discussions with folks directly involved in the project, it is now my understanding that project timeline for the fields could be upwards of 18 months to complete the work, so the fields are never going to be ready for the fall sports season. I also understand that the school athletic department has already budgeted for busing to move kids from Walsh to other fields for practice and further games during the upcoming academic year. So, I'll be sure to be back when you're approving the budget to make sure you keep those dollars as well. In summary, I've seen firsthand the kids and teams in our town using our athletic facilities and the need for more and improved spaces. I am fully in support of authorizing of the bonding dollars to renovate and expand the facilities available to the town at Walsh. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Falsigno.
Hi, David Falsigno, Land Review Drive. I ask that somebody please move for a vote.
We have a member of the public calling the question. Okay.
Call the question.
We will. Are you calling the question, or do you have a comment? Okay. Mr. Ingraham.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm rising in favor of the project. Thank you to the parents and everyone that's come out and spoke about the project. Mainly the reason why I'm getting up is to thank you, Madam Moderator, for scheduling the meeting.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Ingraham. Okay, it looks to me like it may actually be time--
I'll call the question, please.
We have a call to the question. All in favor?
Aye.
No, it's a roll call.
Oh, roll call. Go ahead, friend.
I understand that most of the common questions--
Okay. You're opposed?
You should allow everybody to have a chance to speak.
Representative Adams.
Hold on. Representative Toohill. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Any RTM members? Okay.
We have a motion and a second for calling the question.
I didn't hear a second yet. Do we have a second? I didn't hear a second.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. We need to vote on it? Let's do a roll call?
Representative Adams, you voted yes, correct?
Pardon?
You voted yes?
I can't hear when there's more conversations going on. Can we have just one voice, please?
What is the motion we are voting on?
It's a call the question.
Call the question.
We don't need a roll call vote for that.
Yeah, but, yes, but the roll call vote was asked for Representative Brooks, and so we're going to, you know, the rules say if a representative asks, then we do it.
I will waive that. We could do a voice vote for calling the question, and then the question should be the roll call.
Okay.
Great, okay. Just a voice vote to call the question.
All right. Do we have, let's hear, all in favor of calling the question? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, all right. It appears to me that the question has been, the calling of the question has been approved. So, now we have a motion on the floor, and we have a motion on the floor to approve this resolution, final resolution.
So moved.
Second it, please.
I'll second.
Okay, now we need a roll call vote.
Okay. Representative Adams?
Aye.
Representative Edelman?
Gladly, yes.
Representative Alphon?
Yes.
Representative Anderson?
Yes.
Representative Black?
Yes.
Representative Bonnenberger?
Yes.
Representative Brooks?
Yes.
Representative Dayhill?
Abstain.
Representative Everson?
Yes.
Representative Greenberg?
Yes.
Representative Hartwell?
Yes.
Representative Henschel?
Yes.
Representative Hines?
Representative Hines enthusiastically votes yes.
Representative Ingraham?
Representative Ingraham votes yes enthusiastically also. 25 years now.
Representative Keef?
Absolutely.
Representative Larson?
Yes.
Representative LaFredo?
100 percent yes.
Representative Mareska?
Yes.
Representative McCall?
Yes.
Representative Nupain?
Yes.
Representative Papalizio?
Yes.
Representative Sharkey?
Yes.
Representative Shrestha?
Big yes.
Representative Sumro?
Yes.
Representative Toohill?
Yes.
Representative Verderam?
Happily yes.
Representative Waterman? It passed 26 yes and one abstention, Madam Moderator.
Okay. We have an approval of this resolution, and it is adopted tonight. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's go home.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.